Welcome to the regularly scheduled March 2025's Board Meeting for the Sand Springs Board of Education. Now I'll call the meeting to order and roll call, please. Mullins?
Here.
Hanlon?
Here.
Nagle?
Here.
Wagers?
Wagner?
Here. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have opportunity for the public to be heard. We have no one. Okay. We'll move into the best part. We will start with the Spirit Awards.
In his film entry in the Oklahoma State Thespien Festival, which qualifies him for International Thesfest this summer. In January, he took first prize this year in the ESU Shake Fest competition, beating out 21 other competitors from across Oklahoma. His award includes an all-expense-paid trip to Nationals where he will perform with other state winners at the Lincoln Center in York City this April. Give me that Chick-fil-A card back. You don't need that now. Nah, let's see here, where was I? Ah, the winner of that competition will travel to Oxford for the international level. These national and international opportunities are an achievement in stage and film excellence and deserves wide recognition. Jonathan is an outstanding example of Sandite spirit and achievement. You will also catch Jonathan in this spring's musical Matilda, where he will be playing multiple roles. I am incredibly proud and awed by Jonathan's recent discovery of his talents for stage. He is a gifted writer, actor, and film editor. The combination of these talents and a monologue audition landed him a $500 scholarship at the State Thespien Festival last month. He has a bright future ahead, and I feel very fortunate to have gotten a glimpse of his journey, whose awe Jonathan. I'm not Miss Campfield, but what I do want to say, because I don't know all this stuff, you're right, but what I do know about Jonathan is he is an outstanding student at Charles Page High School, and I just want to personally thank you for being a leader in our building because a lot of people follow this guy, and he is in a lot of different things, not just drama. So, thank you, Jonathan, for being a great leader for us.
All right, well, I was super excited to pick this out of all the awards this evening because, oh my goodness, when you hear the story of these sweet boys and what they did for all of middle school girls, you are going to completely understand. So if I can have Landon Fitzgerald, Carl Legg, and Denver Taylor up here, please. As you can see, Principal Noel is passing out some sweet things that these boys made for all the girls in the middle school, and if you know, the middle school is huge, so that is a big thing. So, they felt it on their heart to make the girls these sweet flowers for Valentine's Day, and Principal Noel had a few words to say. And she said, "These thoughtful boys went out of their way to make Valentine's Day extra special for every girl at their school by using their own time and money to 3D print flowers for each one of them. Their kind gesture brought smiles to so many faces, making every girl feel valued and appreciated. In a world where small acts of kindness can make big differences, their effort was beautiful, it was a beautiful reminder of how important it is to spread joy and make everybody feel special." How wonderful is that, guys? I can say that my daughter received one. I had no idea who it was from, but it sits on her vanity, and now I know that it was from you guys, so thank you very much. And I'm gonna let you take the microphone.
I want to hear why he just sent me an email. Landon sent me an email and said, "Do you care if I give all the girls a rose?" You know, and told me and sent me. I said, "Send me a picture of this. What does this look like?" And so he sent me a picture of it, and it's, I thought they were adorable. Their little legs hang, they're so cute. Anyway, so I want to know why. I wanted to hear, I wanted to wait until tonight to kind of hear the story, so I was hoping Landon would share that with us.
So, we did something kind of like it last year, and they liked it, so I thought we could do it like in a bigger, bigger thing. So that's why we did it.
So, how long did it take you guys to do that? That's a lot.
Long time.
How long did it take to print one of those?
Um, not that long.
Not that long, like how many, like five seconds?
No.
An hour?
An hour forty-five minutes.
That's a lot! How many girls?
A lot.
It was like, yeah, it was between five and six. I think it was like five, sixty, seventy.
Back up all the hard work, yeah, that's just amazing. To be on, to work on the timeline, you know, and communicate. I'm joking. Thank you, that is amazing. It's so precious.
Well, you guys get us the award.
I thought he was gonna back out when I saw how many there were. Honestly, I thought I would send it and he would go, "Oh, that's too many." I don't, yeah.
I don't want to do that.
Yeah.
But you did it anyway, so that's wonderful. So, we have a Chick-fil-A gift card as well and a wonderful award for your kindness. So, Landon? Carl? And Denver. There we go. Congratulations and thank you for your kindness. One, two, three, one more. Thank you, guys. Oh, yeah!
Picture of the flower.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, here, let me grab one. Okay. One, two, three. Thank you, guys.
Here are our leftover ones. Who gets this? Who's next?
And next we have our Sandite Pace Center Award winner. I guess I should put this up here, right? And I would like for Ms. Haley Flores to join me up here. And she was nominated by Ms. Sanders.
She wasn't able to make it.
She's hiding back there. So, we have Morgan, right? Come on over. Ms. Sanders, feel free to come on. And Ms. Sanders says, "Every Friday, the ECEC hosts Page Academy students to help in our classrooms. Today, during our morning assembly, one of those Page Academy students passed out. Several teachers and TAs panicked, but Ms. Haley kept calm and remembered her training as a member of the site's emergency response team. With our principal being out sick, Ms. Haley realized, really stepped up and showed leadership capabilities as she delegated bystanders to call her district nurse, go get the teacher from Page Academy, and calm down the nearby students and staff. She used her training to check for breathing and help him to come to. She did a fantastic job of de-escalating a high-anxiety situation and assisting the student in need of help." Absolutely, thank you.
I'm saying more than what I've already said. I mean, they're just phenomenal. I work with a great team and this whole college team, like everybody works together. They just do such a great job, and I just appreciate everybody that I work for. I probably don't say it often enough, and when the students were up here earlier, I know that all of us think this, that that's the reason why we're here, like when you're up here and the other students are up here, and that's why we all work so hard to make this district a better place for our students. So.
Good job.
Great job.
Thank you.
So, Madam President, if I could take the floor just briefly. I know Mr. Rose, Mom and Dad have come in and they missed his award, but I would think it would be great if we could get you guys backed up, and Mr. Nagle, if you could come and take a photo with Jonathan's parents, that would be fantastic. So, come on up. We're gonna...
We also forgot to ask Jonathan.
Absolutely.
We also forgot, one important thing is to ask Jonathan to talk a little bit tonight. Tell him where, tell him what the plan is for next year.
The plan for next year is to go to the University of New Mexico for film. Originally, I was going to stay here in Oklahoma and become an engineer, but I got offered an amazing scholarship to New Mexico, and I'm gonna be majoring in film and digital arts there, and the film students get paid internships on a regular basis with Netflix, which is a walking distance from the college. So, I don't know how you don't take that opportunity. No? I guess you can't beat the weather.
That's awesome.
Thank you, guys. I'm sorry we're late. Thank you.
Gotta work.
All right, one, two, three. One more. Thank you. Great job. Okay, where is the microphone? Right here, right here.
So, Madam President, I'm gonna ask for your grace one more time. I'd like for all the board members to come up front. I'm sorry, but this is important. You guys, this is a bittersweet evening for us as a board, so we're gonna hope we don't get super emotional because tonight, March of 2025, marks Ms. Wagner's last Board of Education meeting. So, we get to say goodbye, but also celebrate. Her follow-up is in the audience, so thank you, Alicia, for being here as well, but I just want to spend a little bit of time talking about Ms. Wagner. She served on the board since 2011, till now, which means that she has served 168 board meetings, which is a lot. Give her a hand for that.[1141.23][1141.23](Applause) Service on the board is done as a service, meaning you don't get paid for that, and so while we celebrate Jackie tonight, it also would be of me to mention that every board member plays a special role in what we do as a district. I brag on you guys all the time because it takes courage, it takes resilience, it takes a little bit of tough skin to be able to come and serve for kids. We celebrate staff, we celebrate students, which is amazing, but we don't do enough to celebrate you all. So, we have a little bit of a special treat for Ms. Wagner tonight. Jackie, man, brings the peace and calm. She's the one who will ask the soft questions without fear, with a lot of courage, holds us accountable. Even today, on her last board meeting, I got a text from Jackie because there were a couple of questions on tonight's agenda. She has served as board president this year in 2020, and in 2015 as president of the board, and she does it with class and charm and consistency and all those things that you would expect in a board member, making sure we row in the right direction, and we're always staying focused on our children. So, Jackie, this is for you. We love you. And thank you for all the service that you've done. I don't know if any other board member would like to speak, but I'm sure willing to give the mic up for anyone that wanted to say a few words.
And Jackie, this is for you too, because we really appreciate what you do, and it's even got the Sandite stuff on it, so we just said, "You know, it's hard what we do." As Ms. Durkey alluded to, 168 meetings, oh my goodness. But it's hard what we do, but the results of what we do show up in Jonathan. It shows up in, I saw another little one right here, and that's why we do what we do, and it's never been a question with you. So, we appreciate you, we're gonna miss you a lot, Dad. What we decided a while ago was we're not gonna adjourn this meeting. That means she can't leave. So, just thank you. We appreciate you a lot. You want to say anything? I'll hold that.
Sure. She used to say hi to Oscar and Ben, they're watching.
Oh, Oscar's watching, Ben's watching, they're all watching. Yeah.
Well, and my son and my oldest granddaughter's here. They surprised me. They've never come in 168 meetings.[1303.41][1303.41](Laughter). And then my daughter and her sons evidently are in Austin watching. So, it's humbling. I mean, what we do is for our children, and as a single mom, it was the teachers that kept me and my kids on task. It truly takes a village, I mean, a real community, and those are the teachers that made the difference, from the elementary school teacher who stayed with my daughter during my husband's terminal diagnosis, to the high school teachers who allowed my son to play his bagpipes at a lot of occasions. You know, you can't, you can't measure that on a standardized test, and that's what makes schools and teachers and educators and staffs special. And just thank you for this opportunity. It's been amazing.
So, I'm gonna really make, be really obnoxious, so we're gonna take one photo with you, Jackie, and then if it's okay, we're gonna have your family come up and get another photo and do this right.
Since Ms. Durkey got to do that, I want to do one too. I'm gonna ask Ms. Durkey to come and join us at the front.
You know, so... We're transitioning, right? We're transitioning, right? All right. You know what they say about paybacks?
Wow! I do. Oh my gosh, there's my friend.
I'm resigning.
We have one more presentation here tonight, and this person is the anchor and the beacon for our children, for our educators, for our staff.
What we recognize is that Ms. Durkey gets recognized all over the country. Last two weeks ago, she was recognized as the Citizen of the Year from the Chamber of Commerce.[1510.16][1510.16](Applause). And on May the 10th, she's gonna get recognized, I have to write this down because it's way too long for me to memorize, the Oklahoma Foundation for Excellence, she's getting the Medal of Excellence for Elementary and Secondary Administration. There's one person in the state that gets that a year, and it's Ms. Durkey, coming up real soon.[1532.54][1532.54](Applause). Ms. Durkey has been a two-time winner of the OASA Superintendent of the Year in Region Five. That's a big deal, but what we like is that Ms. Durkey's ours.[1547.41][1547.41](Laughter). You know, I, we found a coin, and we give these coins out rarely. You have to be extraordinary, you have to be special, you have to be above and beyond, and Ms. Durkey does that every day. It's been hard. This last month has been tough. Public education today is not getting a lot of lovin'. Ms. Durkey gives that lovin' back to the community every day. She got snow problems, we got employee problems, which you guys helped take care of, we got children problems, we got all kinds of problems, but they're not problems when Ms. Durkey gets to hold them because she just takes care of them with the staff. So, she is so much appreciated, and we just wanted to just recognize her because it's hard. But also, I want her to have this coin that she can take with her. It says, "Think Right, Challenge Minds, Inspire Hearts," that she can take this with her when she gets all these other national and state and every of these other awards, because I want her to know that Sand Springs is her home, that this is, you know, we love her, we thank the world of her, we don't know what we would do without her. She is ours, and we are so thankful for that. So, Sherri, thank you very much.
When we talk about being part of Sand Springs, in my household, my husband calls Ms. Sherri Durkey Ms. Sand Springs. And so, when we think of Sand Springs in our household, we think of Sherri Durkey, and she and I have gone way back. I'm from Missouri, and she hired me in Missouri, and I came here and interviewed, and that was back in 2006, and she welcomed me with open arms, as well as Limestone did as well. So, she means a lot to me and a lot to our community, and I am just so honored to call her friend and just so happy for her. Group hug, no, I'm kidding. Bo.
I picked those.
You did.
You can always count on Bo for a good laugh and keep, you know, keep flowing. You guys, I wouldn't want to be anywhere else, and I say this all the time, everywhere, this is the best Board of Education that you can have, I believe that, in the country and maybe across the world. I don't even know if they have Boards of Education in other countries, but if they did, there wouldn't be none that would surpass this group of folks who earnestly care about our kids, and I'm, it's not just words, you guys, it really is the real deal. It does come with struggles, and it comes with adversity. We're in the people business, and people, the people business isn't necessarily clean all the time. There's some stuff that happens, but what I love and love and love and love about this district and our people, our Board of Education, the people we work with, we keep the kids at the center. And I tell people all the time, as long as we can keep kids in the center, we may disagree about the processes and the means, but we don't disagree about the end. So, thank you, I appreciate it, I'm very humbled, and wasn't surprised, I wasn't expecting this. Putting that away. So, thank you.
The hardest thing is surprising her. Because she's everywhere.
That was hard today. I have to say, I believe it's in turn.
I have to say, I believe it's in turn. I'm not sure how you recover from that.
Adjourn.
We have business, man. Oh my goodness. That did take a while.
All right. Where are we? It took so long that I have to log back in again.
Now's where we tell everybody that.
They can leave if they like, yeah. Or you could stay, it's going to be fun. Yeah, for sure. I'm hungry, me too.
Can you bring me back something?
Oh my gosh.
All right. I'm signed back in now.
Right. Okay, so item number six would be where we would want to begin the business, if you're ready, Madam President.
Madam Chairman, it might ask if we could maybe move up to item 37, since we have whatever number, I don't know if that's the right number.
Item number...
The last one, whatever it is.
Golly, it was a long...
Thirty-seven.
There you go. So we have Mr. Milburn from LD Kearns. That's great, discussing the GMP of our bids for Clyde Boyd Middle School. So Josh, I don't know if you have any questions for him. We went through the bidding process this week. Very happy about the turnout of the number of contractors that showed up, as well as the bottom line number. So if you have any questions, Josh always makes time to come to answer any that you might have.
Josh, I guess my questions are, you got a lot of numbers in there, a lot of competition. You guys were satisfied with all the ones? I noticed there was the low bid in each one of them, but you have vetted one of them out to make sure that the scope, the bid scope, which you want to have, got everything covered, because we get to the end, we want to make sure we got toilet partitions. We didn't leave out toilet, you know, just something like that. So.
Yes, we actually, Earl, myself, and Ryan had Teams meetings with all of the bidders on Thursday, and they had a list of questions. My focus is schedules, so I kind of am hard on schedules, so got all the right answers.
All the subcontractors know that we're going to have school in the building in August, whatever it is, of 2026.
They do, and if they forget, I'll...
Remind them regularly. And then also, the last thing is the budget, because I don't have that in front of me, but I remember that the total amount was in the 18 million for this phase of it.
For this phase. What you're seeing tonight is the total GMP, though, for the total cost, everything included, with the exception of the architect, P, I'm going to say this wrong, FFE?
Furniture, architect, and...
IT.
IT, that's correct.
Correct.
So I guess, Ms. Durkey, the total project right now is we're right where we wanted it to be.
We're right where we needed it to be, absolutely. So you always go in a little bit nervous, I do a little nail biting going into pre-bid and the bid, but it was great. So, good job, LD Kearns.
Josh, have you worked with all these subcontractors? That's an unfair question, but have you worked with all of these subcontractors before and you're comfortable with each one of them? I can tell you, I know most of them, but there's some that just were new names to me that I did not recognize, so I have to trust you guys.
The glazing contractor is new to me.
I did not know him at all. The local glazing contractor was a little disappointed he wasn't as low as the other guy, but that's okay.
Other than that, yeah, I've had experience with all of them.
Good. Good. I don't have any other questions. Thank you, Josh.
I'll make a motion except item 37, as stated in the, I mean, in the notice.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second, vote please.
Mullins.
Aye.
Hanlon.
Aye.
Noggle.
Aye.
Wagner.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So if you all are ready for item number six, Student and Staff Empowerment, I'll proceed. We, first of all, you got to see kids tonight, which was really great. When we talk about empowerment, a lot of times we rely on extracurricular activities or academics, but you saw one from the Drama Department that was pretty outstanding. And I think what we do a good job of in our district is making sure we're trying to reach every student with something that they can grasp onto, aside from the academic portion of what we do. So that was kind of cool. In your packet, I also printed, we printed an email from OSSAA, the Solo and Ensemble Competition from Mr. Wright this weekend, just kudos to the band. There were quite a few kids in there to mention, but I thought it would be whoofus to mention that tonight out loud, giving some thought to the work that our band does as well. IXL data, NAEP proficiency, and the OKMTSS Winter Conference data, those were all attachments in your packet. I can go on and on, but I'm really going to let Mr. Beard talk about those things, because I feel like we're making some really good progress in our district, and I think there's some elements about NAEP testing, that's the nationwide testing, we get compared as a state to others, as well as just some of our staff and the work they do and the recognition in the state of some of our folks that present statewide. So Sean, do you mind talking about those three things?
So the first one I'll start with is the IXL report. Each year when I work with IXL, they are a vendor that we work with to provide our students with skill practice in math and language arts, along with science and social studies as well. And each year when I meet with them, we talk about goals that we have for the sites and for the students in each grade. And one of the things you're looking at on that first page are just some of the metrics that go behind some of those goals. One of the main goals that we set is that we try to, in the skill practice between times when we benchmark kids in the fall and the winter and the spring, teachers give kids enough time, about 10 minutes twice a week is all it takes, really, but they give kids time to work on their skill practice, trying to recoup lost skills or to sharpen skills so that they can stay on grade level or even go a little above that. And to that end, one of the things that we set as a goal is for kids to try to at least earn one to two proficient skills per week. And if you look at that bottom right chart on the first page, you'll see that through the work that Ms. Durkey has mentioned before, that Ms. Noel has been doing with our double block math and language arts, right now Clyde Boyd Middle School is our frontrunner on skills proficient per student per week. They're earning 2.54 skills per student per week, and that's quite a bit when you consider how we take our standards and we break them down into learning targets. So, and that's for math and language arts. And then behind that, you'll see Angus and then Limestone and then so on and so forth down the line. We haven't seen these kind of gains before with IXL, so we're really kind of proud about the kind of growth that we're seeing. The chart at the top of that page just shows for the snapshots that have been taken so far for fall and winter. It shows the amount of growth that's occurred in students in math and language arts. And at the top of that chart, you can see that Angus Valley Second Grade has had a growth increase of 22 in math and a growth increase of 21 in ELA. So we're seeing a lot of gains. I even talked to one principal that said that on the, from the fall to the winter, when looking at NWEA, which is what we test our elementary students on for English Language Arts proficiency, I was told that the second grade class had achieved proficiency of 70th percentile. And in order to be proficient, students have to score at the 40th or above the 40th percentile in NWEA. And the teachers in those classrooms attribute that to the work that they've been doing in IXL. So we're pretty proud of the work they've done. The second page that you're going to see there is also showing just by grade for our secondary students, how much growth has occurred in the IXL snapshot. They test in IXL in the fall, in the middle, in the spring. And we see some really wonderful gains there for math and language arts. So we just wanted to make sure that we shared that with you. Any questions on that one? And then MTSS? Figured I'd say NAEP.
He's not going to want to brag about that, but he and Carrie Schley-Huber threw a grant...
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll do it. We received a grant for them to really get professional development, but the more, I think readily for me being proud of is the fact that they also present statewide. And so I included a feedback piece, and if you scrolled, I think, I believe number, or page 18, the feedback they received from the folks that went to their breakout session. And so those things aren't easy to present, and then to get that kind of feedback of it being helpful and beneficial and relevant is pretty fantastic. And as you know, you encourage our folks to go statewide and be a part of state organizations. And it was just one way to show you that we're doing that with our team members. So good job, you two. It's amazing, and so I think they deserve a little bit of recognition at hand, because they are amazing. And then Sean, I am going to make you talk about the NAEP scores just a little bit. There's an article attached to your agenda that I think is very revealing about just what kind of story the NAEP tells.
So Carrie, Schley-Huber and I, along with Jay Roder, Ryan Bivin, and Angela Noel, are part of a professional development workshop series that we're going to this year called Winning Strategies Playbook. And one of the things that they talked about at our last session were test scores and how much importance hangs on the NAEP assessment and those scores. And many times you'll hear how poorly states are doing because they didn't score proficient on the NAEP test. But this article actually was done in a study with NAEP, and the results that came out of that article are the fact that NAEP will tell you that proficient is actually about four grade levels above where a student is expected to perform. NAEP will tell you that when a student performs at the basic level, that that is considered on grade level. So often when they communicate that states aren't proficient, that's a misnomer. That's saying that students aren't performing at several grade levels above, but they might be very well performing on grade level. So if you get a chance to read that article in its entirety, it's really kind of eye-opening. It was eye-opening for us when we did that workshop, and Carrie and I both came back and we expressed that we should bring that up with Ms. Durkey, and then she wanted to bring it to the board. So if you get a chance to read that, it's really, really eye-opening.
You alluded to, politically, sometimes public schools don't get treated maybe in the way they should, because I know for a fact that we work our tails off trying to make it happen for kids, and I think that is just at least some, I don't know, feel-good data that suggests that we are in fact making progress with kids. And so I just think it's a healthy, healthy look. The last thing I would say in student empowerment, we got some good news this week. We have a senior, Reese Wood, that is an Oklahoma All-Stater, academic All-Stater. So he will be recognized at the OEF banquet in May alongside me. So that's pretty fun to have a kid out there as well. So Reese Wood, he's going to be one to watch, I'm sure, as he travels across the stage at graduation and goes to do what he does. So questions about student and staff? Okay. Moving on to resource and facilities update. I always start with the OASA State Revenue Report. Not much has changed since last month. I start sounding like a broken record. We do know that state revenue is trending down, it's going to be flat or less than. We had the year before, inflation rate is down, but still 3%, and I just kind of made a comment about while revenue's down, inflation is up, that's like taking a hit. It's like a deduction of state revenue. So it's important to make sure we're spending our dollars the way we should be and thoughtful about those things. Federal dollars are still in a kind of a question mode at this point, wondering how allocations from the federal level, number one, will be distributed and to what extent and how, and how much, which is also what we're looking at. And then just understand that the Oklahoma, the state of Oklahoma has reserves for this, for dry periods when the revenue's down, that's why they save it, it's called rainy day. And right now, we're sitting as a state with over $4.6 billion in reserves. So we'll be interested to know if there is a palette in the legislature to maybe appropriate some of that money to keep us whole. We hope that's the case, but you know, time will tell toward the end of the session. You probably noticed driving up, if you got here before it got dark, that there are holes in the south side of the Cass Building. So they are actively, not right this very second, but over the last couple of weeks, have been breaking into the building. It's been very loud. Kristen calls it like you're sitting in a dental chair. I think it's more like a jackhammer, but it is loud. But it's exciting, it's fun to watch that work happen. John Connor, who's the superintendent of the project, tells me they're going to be putting up steel on Wednesday, we'll see, and starting that elevator too. So fun stuff happening at Cass. The bid opening tonight launches our official, kind of what people see start of the building at Boyd, so that's going to start pretty quickly. I think the people, especially myself, are going to be really excited to see that happen. And then we've set KKT loose on the press box. Now that we have the price point for Clyde Boyd Middle School, we really can feel good and comfortable about setting that project loose as well, and maybe even enhancing a little bit, knowing that we've got some room, some wiggle room with the finance. So all things are looking really good for building. So questions about finance, revenue, facility updates? Moving on to item eight would be communication, community involvement. So we had coffee with Cabinet in Northwoods this month. We had four parents, doesn't seem like a lot, but it's interesting how four parents can yield some pretty robust conversations. Attendance policy was still kind of a topic this time. Carrie, anyway, you weren't there, so we did a good job, I think, answering those questions. And it's really related...
They will call me.
Right, they will call you. It's related to chronic absenteeism in the state and their really rules about what constitutes that and how we should handle it. And so there's really no wiggle room. We've assured people that we are trying really hard not to target parents at all, but at the same time, we need kids to be in school so they can learn. So I thought there was a really, you know, kind of an array of questions and conversation that was good. We hosted the Chamber Forum this month in this room. There were several, several people here from the community, from the new county commissioner to just businesses. Of course, our chamber president was there, and we had an opportunity to talk about legislative issues related to school. I was able to put up the OSSBA code so they could get the text messages. So I'm hoping, I think people are starting to kind of wake up and become aware of the goings-on specifically as it relates to this school. So I'm hoping to get more maybe action or advocacy from others than just our staff. So I thought it went really well. Questions about community advocacy, communication? Moving on to school safety, the School Safety or Safe Schools Committee meeting agenda is also attached for February. If you read through it, there were a lot of topics, most are covered on and off throughout the school year. Please note, I feel like I need to just relay this publicly, those questions and discussions and conversations that happen at the district level are filtered down to site committees, and a lot of those ideas and the perspective and best practices get filtered into the site safety plans, and you all approve those every year. So I think it's important to know those aren't just discussions that happen at a high level at the district office, but they get filtered down so that they are replicated into actionable items at school sites. So it's a really important piece of work that we do. And then lastly, I would say just in terms of health, flu hit us hard this semester. I think we've turned a corner, but if we pulled our attendance rates for February, end of January, February, you'd see a decline in attendance because of sicknesses. Staff as well, staff absences were higher as well. Questions about safe schools, healthy schools? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, I would bring your attention to item number 19, which is the meetings and events. We just established the official date for the groundbreaking for Clyde Boyd Middle School. We're going to do that on March 24th, which is a Monday, so we'll be sending out messaging for you all.
Or what?
March 24th, after spring break. March 24th after spring break.
For, for what?
Groundbreaking for Clyde Boyd Middle School.
Well, this one says March 27th. This little flyer you sent my board package.
I think it was the wrong flyer, yeah. Sorry about that. It is wrong. We had the wrong date.
I had to change it in my phone.
You do. We got the wrong one in there. It's the 24th. So, we will resend that, Lisa, and we'll post it out. Yeah, well, it should be fun though. We talked about a bean raising, which we may do in addition, to be honest, once the building starts. And I thought that was really fun with the freshman academy to have a big community event where we could sign the beans. So, that, that could happen later on as well. Also, I'd bring your attention to item number 21-2. This is not new. Just know that, that tis the season for HR to be on steroids. So, you're going to start seeing resignations. There are three teachers on this one. And, and so it starts. Letters of assurance went out today. And so, as you know, we're asking for people to get those in the Tuesday after spring break so we can get stuff posted. So, jobs are getting ready to be posted in a large way for the new season.
Do we know why they moved the summer conference to September?
For OSSBA?
Yeah, I, I can answer that.
Okay.
The Convention Center in Oklahoma City booked something else on the day that we'd always had that. And then, so we had to find another date for that to happen. And we're hoping that next year to go back to the end of August and stuff. But it was just scheduling at the Convention Center.
I mean, I think it should say September. That first week of school is hard to get to. Just saying, just saying, a little.
So, as you sit on the OSSBA board, Mr. Mullins, I think that you.
You, you like it later on.
I do. Well, when it's the first week of school, it's a little crazy.
We always miss the first ballgame, almost every year.
September is not summer. It ends in August.
Well, it's still school time and we're going.
It's going to have to be the fall conference.
I feel like we have a little control over that. So, I think we just kind of go with the flow on the OSSBA.
I think we know some.
Maybe, maybe. Item number 23, again, something you've seen before, but that would be the approval of the maybe center lease agreement for our graduation ceremony. Item 24 is a review of our district facilities use manual. We do rent our facilities out. There was some cleanup language that made very little sense. We raised our prices a tad because they've been the same for, ever since I can remember, the facility use agreement. So, it was time to do that. And item number 26, resolution for HVAC preventative maintenance service agreement. There was a question by Mr. Mullins about the four-year indication, but it really is just a one-year contract that we have the ability to depart from at will every year. So, it has been effective. They do a great job offering just checking the HVAC units, changing filters, all that maintenance that we need to happen on a regular basis. So, there was a question about that. Other than that, if there, unless there's a question about some other item.
Well, I had a quick question. If you go under 12 and under child nutrition, I noticed that $20,000 for milk and it was $60,000 altogether. And I thought, did milk prices go up that much to where it is $20,000?
Probably. I'll cast down if you can, yeah. Everything's going up, inflation.
I was going to say with 5,000 students, I mean, our, our bills from Vinnie Keith or Highland, whoever that might be, they are larger amounts. I mean, I wish Sheri Pearson was here. She could probably chime in on that. But those, that doesn't surprise me that it's costing more to, you know, feed our kids.
Well, I, our, the number of kids that are eating in the cafeteria has risen too since we're offering free and reduced. I, I actually had that conversation with her. I don't have a percentage. And we could sure get that for you, but it was pretty incredible how many more kids are eating in the cafeteria. Garfield was kind of advertising three for free, meaning three choices of the right choices. Even if a student brought their lunch, could still get that for free. So, there has been a, a pretty big rise in the number of kids eating.
The only thing I would add to that, Ms. Hanlon, is that Ms. Pearson tracks that on a daily basis. I mean, she is, you know, very educated in, in her budget, and then I'm looking at it too. So, and she has a very healthy fund balance to be able to allow her that.
That's a lot for milk.
Right.
That's all I have.
I think that's why she maxes out that three-month carrying capacity on her fund balance too, so.
Any other questions about the consent agenda?
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
All right, on to the action items. First one is proposed executive session to discuss employment recommendations. All right, then, item number 31, a pro, a motion to propose the approval of the employment recommendations.
Ma'am Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item number 32 is the recommended calendar for the '25-'26 school year. You all had access to that last year's, or last meeting as a first read. And so, we're asking for approval for that calendar for next year.
Make a motion, we approve the calendar for the '20-'25-'26 instructional school year.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye. Aye.
Item 33.
Item number 33, our policies. I want to speak to CD EF. We, we compiled a protocol for immigration, the possibility of eyes coming into schools that you all have, have seen. There, the policy GKA was very old, so we needed to revise that. We mimicked, I believe, our OSSBA source for that policy. But all four of those were really about needing to, to revise and, well, review and revise because those policies were very dated. So, that kind of sparked a look into those. On item F under 33, there's one typo that Mr. Mullins caught, to be honest. In number nine, the word located, it's talking about if there's paraphernalia or some sort of drug found in a search, that those things had to be taken to the proper authorities in a locked box, not a located box. So, the only change on those policies would be locked instead of located in item number nine under FNF-R.
Any questions?
Ma'am Chairman, make a motion, we approve the new policies to the district policy manual as indicated on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
All right, item number 34.
Item number 34 is a recension of the proposed, of the policies below A and B, DCCB Drug and Alcohol Testing Program for bus drivers and other safety-sensitive positions. And then DCCB-R, which is the regulation. Those two are being replaced with A and B above. So, those need to be revamped as well. We talked about that at the last meeting, about adding the safety-sensitive language that we felt like was more in alignment with current practices. And so, we don't need two policies. So, we're going to, we want to resend the ones that were in the manual currently.
I'll make a motion. We approve item 34 as stated.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
So, item 30, yes.
Thanks, Sean. Can I just really quickly reiterate on that AB that we just replaced? If you guys will notice that it's DCCB-RFR. Remember that RFR? We've started putting that in there because 99% of everything that we put in there really comes from OSSBA. But that really we followed with our attorney. So, that RFR means it came from RFR. So, that's why it's, when you, when you read it that way and it's labeled, it came from a different area than general.
People ask what those letters mean, as if it's an acronym. They're really not an acronym for anything. And so, I answer that question is always, I have no idea. So, it's, it's a, well, no, RFR, no, no, no. I know, right, but I'm just saying the DCCB. We don't know where that, yeah, the OSSBA. So, RFR is Rosenstein, Fitz and Ringel. But it's just funny, that's their lettering to identify. And they're all kind of categorized together, but I have no idea why they pick those letters. But RFR would indicate Rosenstein, Fitz and Ringel. Thank you, Gary. I don't know. I could create something, but I don't think that you'd want me to do that. All right, item number.
Everybody would know it would be Gary.
Gary does know, actually, probably.
There's a A category, it's like general, B, you guys, C is business, and D is this.
And D is this, there you go. Well, D, I guess, drug, I don't know. You could, it's just a general category. Oh, my goodness. Right. Item number 30, we wrote it on that, right? Yes, okay.
Not 35.
Not 35. No, right. Okay, item number 35. This is one that was suggested by Mr. Wyon. I'm going to let him talk about it a little bit because there is an additional way school districts are able to invest funds for profit. So, Mr. Wyon, would you like to explain?
Yeah, this is called the Oklahoma Liquid Asset Pool or OLAP. We've heard it at OSSBA, COSA, I think OK ASBO. A lot of those groups are promoting it as well. And I've heard from other CFOs, you know, Mustang is one that uses it, Lawton. And I talked to another one today from Comanche that uses this. And they're all really happy with it. What I've been doing is tracking it for about the last year that I've been in this position. And it's very, their rates are very competitive with the CD rates that we invest in right now. The, the difference between that and OLAP is that OLAP is same-day or at latest next-day liquid. So, it gives us that liquidity if we needed it. It's right there where CDs, we're locking them up for a six-month term or a 12-month term. So.
The yield's competitive.
The yield is, is as good or better than what we are getting with some of our local CDs. So, when we got our big ad valorem money in January, you know, right now it sits in a repurchase account where I think we could use some of that to invest in, in this liquid asset pool that plenty of other schools are involved in, especially your smaller schools in Oklahoma, so.
But, by the way, just kind of to add to that, giving us the approval to do that doesn't necessarily mean that we have to. But if we are in a place where it would behoove us because of percentage yield or especially for a short term, meaning that we might need the money quicker than not, it would be, it would be great if we had the opportunity to do that with your approval.
And they're restricted on what they can invest in by our state statute. So, if you look at their portfolio, it's in, you know, collateralized bank deposits, some money market, a very small percentage, some treasury, repurchase. I mean, all of those are allowable within state statute, so.
Questions for, for Mr. Wyon?
Mine's not a question, but it's to Jackie. She probably, I, I know she understood what he said. I'm not sure I understood at all. So, when you leave, Alicia, you have to take over that. Just want to make sure we get that straight, so. Liquid asset.
Yeah, Oklahoma Liquid Asset.
Okay.
Yep. And I don't think it's meant, you know, it's competitive with our CD rates. You know, our CD rates are, are good rates, you know, and we fight for that every time they come due. But I think it's more for what we have right now within our repurchase account. It's an opportunity we're missing out on right now, so.
Cool.
Are they, any type of government insurance on those rates?
They, they are not FDIC, they're, because they're not CDs. But their, their security is what they're restricted in investing in, which is, you know, under state statute, those restrictions. So, they've got a AAA rating by S&amp;P, which is the highest that you can have. And they measure those things. So, that was one of the first questions that Ms. Durkey and I had, so.
I figured you'd vetted that. Any other questions?
Ms. Chair, Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the proposal to become a member of the Oklahoma Public School Investment Interlocal.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Item 36 was, is a change to our interlocal agreement. The original agreement allowed us to collect a million dollars from the city based on their bond proposal. I wouldn't even be able to tell you what year, I think '22. But nonetheless, the city handed us a million dollars to put in our building fund to help pay for the plaza area of which we have readily exhausted. There was additional cost with the rebuild of the sidewalk. Ellie Hearn's gave us an estimate of $18,000, mostly for the cost of the concrete, to be honest. We really probably maybe should have, should have paid for that. Like, if you were building a house, you're responsible for providing the sidewalk in front of your house. I just reached out to the city to ask if they would be willing to pay an additional $18,000, and they agreed. They're a great partner. And so, Mike Carter said, this is not a problem. We'll just make an addendum or an amendment to the interlocal agreement we did with the million, and you can have the money. So, I can't say enough about, I mean, I love our district, I love our board, I love our people. But man, the community too is just amazing. So, that's kudos to, to them. So, if we can accept that interlocal agreement, then we, they will incur the cost of the sidewalk around the plaza.
Ma'am Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the addition to the interlocal agreement or amendment to it for the downtown plaza with the city.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?
Aye.
Nagle?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Already done item number 37, so let's move on to any other matter that.
There is not.
That we may not have been reason for, foreseen or for talking.
Real quick, can I add? I'm over here, over here. I sent you a text just to remind them. I didn't know if we had a chance to tell them that March 27th is our Teacher of the Year reception. That'll be here in the boardroom at 4:00.
I did not, but thank you for indicating that.
I was wanting to talk about that for at least another 30 minutes, if that's possible.
You're just trying to delay her ending of the, yeah, meeting. I hear you.
Any other announcements?
Yeah, Sean's getting fired. Make a motion, we adjourn.
I don't think they're going to say it because that means done, so.
Can I second my own adjournment?
I don't think that's in alignment with Robert's rules.
I have a motion and a second. Vote please. Mullins?
Aye.
Hanlon?